From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning and welcome to the June 24, 9 a.m. Board of Supervisors meeting in Kern County. We begin always with a roll call. So, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Thank you. Our next item is our normal salute to the flag. This morning, we have a really special individual joining us, a member of the county family, as you'll learn in a moment. Good morning and welcome. You never know by looking at you, my goodness. U.S. Army Specialist Lynette, am I saying that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Lynette Hernandez served in the U.S. Army National Guard from 2008 to 2011. She served officially as military police officer. Now, that I can see. But also fielded many roles, such as a machine gunner while activated for Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom. That's stunning. She was activated to participate in various counter-drug missions, also including included teaching Northern California Central Valley schoolchildren the importance of being drug-free. Lynette now continues to serve this community as a therapist to our very own, as a member of the Kern County Behavioral Health and Recovery Department. Lynette, thank you for your service to this great nation. Thank you to your service to us, right? People in this room and in this county. Thank you. God bless you. We'll stand for this flag salute, and I would ask that, in the end, if you would remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Thank you, Lynette.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are available at the back of the room, as you know, normally in paper form, but we also have an introduction to the 21st century, which is the ability to use a QR code to obtain the agenda, follow along, very easy. For some people, that's easy. For me, it would be a complete nightmare, but, you know, particularly younger folks and people that are tech-oriented, this is really, really cool. So, there it is. If you're at home, you can also put your phone up to the TV, which is, you know, more than terrifying, but it is, but it is helpful, and you can obtain the information, follow along, and, you know, participate very meaningfully. So, please, give that some consideration. We'll move next to pet of the week, and you are just not going to believe this little character that's going to come out right now. Oh, look at this little dog. It's just unbelievable. We're certain this is a dog.
Correct.
Yes, okay, correct. Are we on here? We're sure. Okay, very good. Oh, look at you, this precious little baby. Who do we have here?
Looks like he's a cat.
All right, any minute, massive attack.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this ferocious beast in my arms is Gizmo.
Gizmo.
Gizmo just came to us yesterday. He's a terrier mix, probably wire-haired terrier mix, only about nine weeks old, so he's a tiny puppy. Came in as a stray. He's available for adoption Thursday morning at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
For how much?
He's just $20 this month.
$20, my goodness. And how big will Gizmo get?
Not much bigger than this.
We might lose him.
He's aptly named Gizmo because he's going to be small.
Okay, but no water after midnight. That's, okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Not to age myself. Oh, couch.
In case my wife is watching, absolutely not.
You've got it F on your hands, Peters. Peters has a six-month-old baby, that's why. I do not give him trouble when he is late, like today. Just kidding, just kidding, Peters. Okay, moving along, we are going to address our consent agenda. Consent matters are considered routine and non-controversial by staff, and that's why we put them on consent. But when members of the public feel otherwise, you want to ask questions about them or have an issue to raise with a consent matter, now is the time to do so. I'm going to read the consent agenda, and then you can let me know if that's what you're doing here. Consent matters begin on page two, and they include items two and three, as well as seven and eight. On page three, all items listed, nine through 15. On page four, all items listed, 16 through 22. On page five, all items listed, 24 through 31. On page six, all items listed, 32 through 39. On page seven, all items listed, 40 through 47. On page eight, 48 through 50. And item number 51 has been withdrawn by the department, so the only matters that will be on consent on page eight will be 48 through 50, 51 being withdrawn by the department. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment, ask question on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to my colleagues for action.
Motion on consent.
Second.
We have a motion on consent. In a second, please cast your votes.
Madam Chair, for some reason, if we display, go ahead and display the vote. Close the vote. It's not going to display everyone's vote. We're having a little technical difficulty. So, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Parlier?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes all ayes.
Moving on to a rather difficult matter this morning. I promised I would not wear mascara, and then I forgot, Margot, I put it on. So, we're just going to be a big mess, and that's just how it goes sometimes. This morning, we have the incredible privilege, honor, sacred opportunity to acknowledge a member of our family and their profound, profound contributions to this county, to the family. And of course, we cannot capture even a fraction, but I'm going to give it a try. So, Margot, today, as we, under resolutions and proclamations, honor Margot Raison, County Council, upon retirement with 38 years of service to the County of Kern. Thirty-eight. That's my motion for resolution, and I'd ask that Margot join me down at the podium.
A second.
Thank you, David.
We are still having technological difficulties, so we'll do a roll call vote. Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Parlier?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
And that carries all ayes.
Well, Margot, here we are. Let's do it. Margot, I'm going to talk about you right now. Try not to get too embarrassed. Margot Raison was born and raised in Dinuba, California, and after graduating from high school, she attended Stanford University, graduating with a degree in sociology with an emphasis in organizational behavior. She then attended and graduated from Loyola Law School. Quite a pedigree. Upon graduating from law school, she began her career with Kern County in the council's office September of 1987. Our hair was different then, huh?
No. It's the same.
Nothing wrong with that. Ms. Raison started as a law clerk and was appointed as deputy county council. She was assigned to the Health and Safety Section of County Council, handling cases such as juvenile dependency, appeals, probate, and conservative, conservatorship hearings, LPS jury trials. She went on to work in the litigation section, the juvenile dependency section, and then the advisory section, assisting many county departments with contracts, leases, RFPs, and personnel matters. Personnel and employment law soon became her specialty. In 2005, Ms. Raison was appointed to the position of chief deputy of the newly-created Employment Section, overseeing personnel matters, disciplinary appeals, and other employment-related matters. While in this role, she led the attorneys and support staff, coordinated the Supervisors Academy, and represented the county in hundreds of disciplinary appeals in front of the Civil Service Commission. At this time, the legal defense of the county for workers' compensation matters was brought in-house with the Employment Section and under Ms. Raison's direct control. She also served as the interim risk manager, and Ms. Raison provided sexual harassment and workplace violence training to thousands of county employees over the years, connecting her with the talented county workforce and providing education that protected employees and the county, and county alike. In 2018, Ms. Raison was appointed as county council, I remember that moment, where she helped lead the county through the entirely uncharted waters of COVID-19, utilizing her decades of legal experience to aid the county in navigating the challenging landscape. During her eight years as county council, she has aided the Board of Supervisors, the county administrative officer, and county departments in countless legal matters. Ms. Raison was active in the County Council State Association, serving on the Board of Directors, and Ms. Raison served as much more than an attorney, who supported the board in county leadership. You are often, Margot, our therapist as well. She was a trusted advisor, counselor, supporter, and sounding board for all county leaders encouraging new challenges. During her tenure with the office, she has supported 22 different board members. Twenty-two different politicians. God bless you. Ten county administrative officers, and countless county employees and residents. And Ms. Raison brought a calm and thoughtful approach to every single issue she addressed. Her leadership and expertise will be greatly missed. We wish to thank Ms. Raison for 38, 38 years of service to this county, her friendship with many of us, and for the growth she's led within her department over the last three decades, specifically since being appointed county council. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, does hereby honor, honor, in this sacred moment and on this sacred grounds, commend our county council, Margot Raison, upon her retirement with 38 years of friendship and dedicated service to the glorious people of Kern County. I'm going to stick this one after you. Margot, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm used to saying, Madam Chair, board member, so, Madam Chair, board members, good morning. First, thank you for this resolution. It is a privilege to sit in that chair as legal advisor to your board. It isn't an easy position, but your board's collegiality towards each other and the respect you display to the county department heads and staff and members of the public who stand right here, or sit over there, or over there, make it an honor to hold the title of county council. So, I was thinking what to say, and I kind of flashed back to one day in seventh grade in a U.S. government class, I decided I was going to be a lawyer. I can't tell you why exactly, but in the description and learning about the governmental structure, it seemed to me that the lawyers were the ones who were making things happen. So, I announced my plans that night at dinner, and I never wavered, until my freshman year in college, fall quarter, when my freshman advisor told me I needed to major in political science in order to go to law school. So, off to the bookstore I went. That was back in the days when there were bookstores and you bought college textbooks. So, I go to the bookstore, and I saw that the recommended book list for the first poli-sci class contained 35 books. Are you kidding? I thought. Thirty-five books over a 10-week quarter of school? Then I wavered. Somewhere along the line in college, I realized that I didn't have to be a poli-sci major. I could major in something more interesting to me, in my case, that was organizational behavior, and still go to law school. So, off to law school I went, and about two-thirds of the way through law school, I realized that I still had no idea what type of law I wanted to practice. Thankfully, at that time, a career guidance counselor suggested I apply for an internship with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. That was a game changer. I worked for the land use division and worked on projects that I could actually see, such as the light rail system that was being built at the time, and football stadium litigation. I was hooked, and I knew that public sector law was what I wanted to do. As I graduated from law school, I found myself moving to Bakersfield and quickly set my sights at landing a job at the Kern County Council's office. I remember my first day with the office. I even remember what I wore. This building wasn't built. The county administrative officers and the board chambers were in the Superior Court Building at 1415 Truxton. I was so excited to be working at my dream job. And I had law school friends who were making twice my salary and working on the 42nd floor of a high-rise building in a big city, but as they were reviewing deposition transcripts, I was doing my first solo jury trial or growing the Sacramento, to speak, at the Capitol. Every day, I was exposed to new things, new projects, new legal hurdles, and always new challenges. That has never changed. From my first day, I've been surrounded by smart, dedicated, and talented county employees. Of course, I think the Office of County Council, I'm sorry, has the very best attorneys anywhere and the most remarkable support staff. I've also been lucky enough to oversee the Risk Management Division, which includes the workers' comp adjusters, the county's safety and insurance programs. I'd like the members of the Office of County Council and Risk Management to stand up. Some of them are here today and just recognize them. They are an amazing group. I am grateful to call them my colleagues and my friends. I'd like to thank all the former members of the county council team. Over the years, they helped shape me as a lawyer and a person. I'm especially grateful to my management team. They are supportive, dedicated, and make my job easier and truthfully more fun. I'd like to thank the dozens of department heads and other county staff that I've worked with over the years. None are better than the current department heads and their staff. I'd also like to thank my husband, who was somewhere. Some of you might recognize him. Ours is a true Kern County love story. We met more than 20 years ago in the café over there. Our county jobs have provided us endless opportunities for conversation, but I've no doubt we will continue to find a million other things to talk about beyond the world of county happenings. I'd also like to introduce my stepdaughter Bailey Torres and my granddaughter Scarlett. So, in kind of, again, thinking about what I wanted to say, I discovered that the Office of the Kern County Council was created in 1943. I believe I am the eighth person to hold the title. It has been possible for me, due to the shoulders I've been able to stand on, those that paved the way for me. I hope my shoulders will help those that follow me succeed in their positions. Again, thank you for this resolution and the opportunity to hold this position and be a member of the county team.
You know, in closing, I want to highlight, I love that you shared your love story. I was not aware you met at the café, and the food there is very good now, so please fry it.
Yes, it is.
Please, I encourage you. And now, you never know what could happen there. The loss of the brain trust to Kern County by both you and your husband is profound. It is profound, and we can only be assuaged by that, by how incredibly you have prepared the next generation of leadership in your office. Margot, I have watched you for years, under profound pressures from many political actors, from society, from just the job, I have watched you traverse very complicated matters, and I have found you to be incredibly fair, incredibly honest, incredibly devoted. fair, incredibly honest, incredibly devoted to the county of Kern. You're not perfect, I'm not perfect. You were so gracious earlier to say that our colleagues were so, we get along so well, and in public, we do, right? In closed session, it's a very different story, and that's the way it should be. And Margot has had to be ringside master, she's had to jump in and, you know, pull us apart, and there were more than one time, Margot, where I really wondered where you would be on matters, many times. I waited to hear the counsel that would come from your mouth, so I could understand your heart, your ethics, and what you were about. And consistently, time and time again, I found you to put the county of Kern's interests above your own, perhaps, or even your own opinions, or the incredible profound pressures of politicians that you serve here. I have found that to be consistent about you. I love that your resolution says calm, thoughtful, resolute manner by which you led as a professional this county, us as, you know, as members of this county family, and you have just been remarkable. And I'm sad for the loss of brain trust, I am. But I've done enough of these now, Kathy, you know, mine will come soon. It is the way it goes, but it works so well when we train up the next generation, train up a generation of leaders that will serve this community with honor and with grace. So I want to thank you sincerely and personally, I want to thank you for your service to this county, the county of my family, the county of so many beautiful families, so many hopes and dreams. I'm so grateful to you, and I appreciate your service and your kindness to me, your professionalism to me, and to just the beauty that is represented right here in this very moment. So thank you, and I'm going to stop crying, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't go away, Margot. I'm sure others have something to say, but I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your hard work, and those of you that don't know, oftentimes, I get, some of us get more done late in the afternoon, maybe even into the early evening, and so I'm here sometimes late at night, but every time I'm here, your car is here as well as else's. Those two seem to be here all the time. You put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work, and I just want to acknowledge it. And I think you've done the thing that we all need to do, and that is try to leave your job, your work, your department better than you found it, and I think you've done that. And I just, we'll miss you. You know, two things. It was 22 board members, was it the last one that put you over the edge? That was Parlier, by the way.
Absolutely not.
And I know, I know you've thought this through, but you realize you're going to spend more time with Jeff now, that's a...
I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right. I thought those might, at least that last one, might convince you to change your mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and Mario, thank you for your service to the county. Thirty-eight years is a very long time. You could have easily left at age, at 30, but you stayed another eight. It's a testament to your dedication, your work ethic. I concur with Supervisor Couch. Your cars are first to arrive, the last to leave, many, many, many late nights. It's a testament to your work ethic, your intellect, you do have a calming demeanor. There's some tough, tough tension issues. You're smooth, you're methodical, you're reassuring, and you put the law first, you put the county's interests first. So thank you, enjoy retirement, enjoy the world, you're a great traveler, and I wish you the best to you and Jeff, and God bless you in your retirement.
Margot, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate getting to know you, both personally and professionally. You've always had a great sense of caring and compassion, concern for everything that you do, so I really appreciated that, working through issues with you and talking about our shared interests in travel. And I know you guys are going to get to do a lot of that in your next chapter, so I'm sure you'll be watching the meetings while you guys are hanging out in Australia, but...
Oh, yes.
But just have a glass of wine for us while you guys are enjoying it, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Did we finish? Did everybody?
I guess I'm last, Margot. You just are wonderful. Even though I've had a short tenure here with the county, your demeanor, you're brilliant, smart, witty, and, you know, in tense situations, you just come across that everything's going to be okay. And that's just a wonderful attribute about yourself. I wish you and Jeff just a wonderful life, full of good food, good wine, and safe travels.
Thank you.
Take care, my friend.
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay, well...
Could I have my group stand up and have somebody take the picture?
Yes, 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 let's do it. Christian. What a great idea to do this. Say Paris, perhaps?
Very nice.
Excellent. Woo! Okay. What a great idea to do this. Isn't that nice? Say Paris, perhaps?
Very nice.
Excellent. Woo! Okay. Item number four is a proclamation for July 2025 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County. Acknowledgement of Caitlin's Law. This matter will be handled by Supervisor Jeff Flores.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes. We'll do another roll call. Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Parlier?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Motion passes all ayes.
Excuse me, yes.
Motion still passes all ayes. Good to see you, Lito, good morning.
Good to see you.
Always good to see you.
Good to see all of you.
Good morning, members of the board. Anytime we're here with Lito Marilla, we know, we know we're going to save lives and positively impact our community and our citizens, so thank you for joining us. July is the hottest month of the year, as you know, in Kern County, which is why it's been designated as Purple Ribbon Month. This serves as a reminder to our community about the critical importance of child safety throughout July, and the heat has not come yet, but it will. It's going to come fiercely and soon, no different than taxes. It always, it always, it always hits us. You know, when you have a parked car, even if it's 100 degrees, after time elapses, that 100 will turn into 148, and every elevated temperature after that, 105, 110, just do the math, it's that much higher and that much dangerous. So as of 2025, there's been already three hot car-related child deaths in the United States. In 2024, 40 children lost their lives due to being left alone, so needless, so unnecessary, so avoidable. Purple Ribbon Month is being declared in memory of Caitlin Maine Russell and all the children who have tragically lost their lives to preventable injuries in and around cars. So let's save some lives, let's share awareness, and our director, Lito Marilla, is going to talk about activities and more about Caitlin's Law and the work that needs to be done to prevent this needless tragedy in deaths. Actually, I forgot to present this, and the most important part, from our board and from our chairman, the board has recognized July 2025 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County, signed by our chairman.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to obviously proclaim July as Purple Ribbon Month in honor of Caitlin Russell. I think it's important to note that this actually kicks off our campaign and awareness around leaving children under six unattended in a car, especially during the hot summer months. As Supervisor Flores alluded to, and this is so important, you kind of take things for granted when you think 96 degrees, not so bad, leave the windows cracked open, but leaving your child in the car absolutely creates a situation of hazard and danger, to the tune of, again, as Supervisor Flores alluded to, three children dying already, and it hasn't even been summer yet. That's pretty tragic when you think about that. And that's why we wanted to come here, and we come here every single year, is just to create that awareness about making sure that you don't leave kids unattended. The temperatures in these cars, even if it's 96 degrees, is 140 degrees and rising. And when you think about a child, their body temperatures rise three to five times faster than a normal adult, so you can see where it could be real tragic and catastrophic. But this is 100% preventable, and all you need to do is be more aware of it, be obviously cautious of it, never leave your child unattended. Now I'd like to introduce the Chief Deputy of Human Services, Vanessa Frando, who has some tips regarding this.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores, Madam Chair, members of the board, for providing this proclamation and helping us promote the safety of children in our community by leading the Purple Ribbon Month Awareness Campaign in Caitlin's memory, in hopes that it will prevent tragedies like this in our own community. Purple Ribbon Month highlights Caitlin's laws, named after six-month-old Caitlin Marie Russell of Corona, California, who died due to a heat stroke after being left behind and forgotten in a babysitter's van. I will share an excerpt of her mother's words. "I dropped Caitlin off like any other morning. I gave her a kiss, told her I loved her and would see her tonight. At 12:45 PM, I received a call at work. They said it was an emergency. It was the Riverside County Sheriff saying there was an emergency with my baby. She wasn't breathing, and they were transporting her. She had been left in a car. I remember screaming and falling to the floor. It was 100 degrees outside that day. I knew there was not much hope. When we arrived at the emergency room, I prayed she would live. My husband and mother arrived soon after, in time to hear the pediatrician say the words that will haunt me daily: 'I'm sorry.'" Caitlin's body temperature had been 107 degrees upon her arrival in the hospital, and she died from hypothermia. It was a heartbreaking tragedy. I share Caitlin's story as a way that we can all share it with our community, with our family members, to try to prevent this from happening to any other child. Caitlin's not the only child that has passed away from being left behind in a hot vehicle. In 2024, 40 children died in hot cars across the country, and 29 children in 2023. Since 1990, there has been a total of 1,125 child fatalities that were preventable. After Caitlin's death, her mother and grandmother mobilized and began Purple Ribbon Month and worked to pass Caitlin's Law, which became effective on January 1, 2002, making it a citable offense to leave a child six years old of age or younger unattended in a motor vehicle without the supervision of someone at least 12 years of age. Kidsandcars.org shares a safety checklist to make sure a child is never left alone in a car. They include making it a habit of opening the car's back door every time you park to ensure no one is left behind. To enforce this habit, place an item that you can't start your day without in the back seat, like your purse, your badge, your laptop, your handbag. Clearly announce and confirm who is getting each child out of the vehicle. Miscommunication can lead to everyone thinking someone else removed the child, especially when they're in a car seat. Ask your childcare provider to call you right away if your child hasn't arrived as scheduled." Once again, this tragedy is preventable. We can all do our part to keep kids safe in and around our cars by sharing Caitlin's story and sharing these tips. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your passion and what you do, it really shows. Thank you, Lito, good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'm going to exercise chair's discretion just for a few moments and take item number six before item number five. So item number six is our board member announcements and reports, and I want to start out by acknowledging the birthday of my right-hand and chief of staff, Christian Romo. Are you here? Christian? Are you here? Oh, I'm going to be so mad at you, I told you I was going to... You saw him walk out? Okay. Well, today is Christian's actual 29th birthday, that's not a pretend 29. I told him that's the last age you're going to be proud of being, and that's just the way it goes. But anyhow, it is his birthday, so I'll be getting a chat to say hi to him. Christian's here, working diligently on his birthday, as we expect him to, as most of us do, frankly, but, but it's just a nice thing to see. I also want to acknowledge some friends of mine that are in town, Ronnie and Mirabella Gallegos, are you here? Where, would you please come on down for a moment? And Ronnie and I were best friends in, is, as grade school kids, we grew up in my father's church, we spent almost every weekend with our youth groups, and I remember when Ronnie, come on down to the podium, I remember when Ronnie left Bible College at Multnomah, I remember being there at that graduation in Portland, and then, of course, when I was in law school in Indiana, you were in seminary in Chicago. We have been connected through the years in many, many, meaningful, beautiful ways. I am so happy that you're here visiting in Kern County, your home, and you have your gorgeous daughter with you. So good to see you. How old is she, Ronnie?
11.
11 years old, oh my goodness, and you'll be in town for the week?
Yes.
And making your rounds.
Yes.
So I just wanted to welcome you back to Bakersfield and show you the Board of Supervisors chambers and what your old friend has been doing all these years.
I'm very, 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 very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank, I'm so proud of your beautiful daughter and the kind of father that you are. She is a remarkable child, she is going to do great things, I just know it. It's loving, wonderful parents, and we're so happy to see you here and be here, so I just wanted to say welcome to you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, we'll see you soon. Okay. Item number six will also include today what we were not able to do at our last board session, but we're doing it now, which is very, very exciting. It's an announcement regarding our airports director, finally, and last Tuesday's meeting, I reported that the board appointed Bill Lemank, is that right? Thank you, as our next Director of Airports, starting July 12, 2025, the hottest month here, as you know, and that we would have an opportunity to introduce him at today's meeting. Mr. Lemank has a Master's in Business Administration and over 30 years in the aviation industry. He most recently served as Senior Planner for the Virginia Department of Aviation, where he oversaw state airports, projects, and budgets for 31 airports in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Prior to that, he served as the Business Development Director of Newport News Airport, where he helped develop the airport master plan, created a local marketing program to support local businesses and organizations, and achieved 100% hangar occupancy rate. Before working at Newport News at the Virginia Department of Aviation, Mr. Lemank worked as a flight instructor and commercial pilot for over 20 years. We'd like to give Mr. Lemank a heartfelt welcome to Kern County and an opportunity to say a few words. Congratulations and welcome, Bill.
Good morning, thank you, Chair Perez and members of the board. I am truly honored by the trust you have placed in me as the new Director of Airports for Kern County, and I would like to express my sincere gratitude for this incredible opportunity. I am excited to join our dedicated airport team and to work closely with this community, local businesses, and all county departments. Together, we can build on the strong foundation already in place to expand the regional economic impact of our airports, create new workforce development opportunities, and ensure that every corner of Kern County is well-served by our aviation system. I look forward to listening, learning, and collaborating with all of you as we chart a course for continued growth and success. Thank you again for your confidence. I am eager to get started and very happy to be here.
Bill, I was amazed at your performance in the interview. We had really excellent candidates, and it was tough, let me tell you. You shone, obviously, and you're here, and we're thrilled and delighted to have you, but I want you to know, there was a lot of interest in this, not to make you feel bad, but there was a lot of interest, and I was amazed at the variation of expertise that exists...
every corner of Kern County is well-served by our aviation system. I look forward to listening, learning, and collaborating with all of you as we chart a course for continued growth and success. Thank you again for your confidence. I am eager to get started and very happy to be here.
Bill, I was amazed at your performance in the interview. We had really excellent candidates, and it was tough, let me tell you. You shone, obviously, and you're here, and we're thrilled and delighted to have you. But I want you to know, there was a lot of interest in this, not to make you feel bad, but there was a lot of interest, and I was amazed at the variation of expertise that exists, in particular, your resume, what you have... what you know, what you do, your family. You know, we're really eager to meet all of you and welcome you into the Kern County family, as you can see this morning. It's a warm, gracious place until we get to closed session. But as far as you're concerned, you know, we'll be A-OK.
It's been... Everyone here has been very welcoming, and it's been exciting for the whole family. Thank you.
Very good. Wonderful. Welcome, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We're going to head back now to the normal agenda item, which is number five, and this is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public who would like to address this board on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors but are not on today's specific agenda, but still within our jurisdiction. Good morning. Welcome. Nice to see you.
Good morning, board.
Morning, Jess. Can you state your name? I know we know you, but for the record.
Jess Sanders. Concerned citizens reviewed the original documents submitted by the Dominion Voting Machine with the Secretary of State dated October 18, 2019. It's important to notice that the major system changes were adopted September 4, 2020, less than one year later. We have included both documents in your handouts. You will notice that the major changes were not approved directly by the Secretary of State, Alex Padilla, or the Deputy State... Secretary of State Susan Lapsley. The September 4, 2020, changes were signed in effect by a designee. These changes were made one month prior to the 2020 election. This is the same system we're still using today. Our concern... Our concern is the county jurisdiction was... Jurisdiction was usurped by the state by not allowing the county to self-verify the accuracy of the county data as required to maintain continuous control of county data. Again, note that the county jurisdiction was usurped by the contract signed by Dominion and the Secretary of State in this section. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Good morning. Good morning, board. Good to see you this morning, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, and all the hard-working staff. My name is Glenn Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N. Want to begin where Jess left off there for point of concern number three. We request the Elections Office official explain the relationship of the DFM associates, the E-I-M-S, with the Dominion system and register voter roles to the Board of Supervisors. Concern number four. Concerned citizens request the Board of Supervisors to personally review external security seals used on all the voting equipment. Number five. Concerned citizens request the Board of Supervisors to make inquiry to any Kern County voting equipment that has been disposed of and to what entity it was given. At the bottom of the document, the approved changes were based on the application change notes, testing performed, review by the state, approved testing authority, which did not go through the rigorous review of the original Dominion system submission that had been approved three months prior, in October 18, 2019. Notice the addition of the ballot to include a watermark and non-scannable barcode. Concerned citizens would like to verify, as the ballots are received, that the watermark is recognized prior to the scanning ballots. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Morning.
Kathy.
Dennis, Kathy.
Dennis McLean, M.C., capital L-E-A-N. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Supervisors and staff. I'm going to be speaking on this press release dated June 17, 2025. Attorney General Ken Paxton opened investigation in 33 potential non-citizens who allegedly voted in the 2024 general election after Texas Secretary of State Jane Nelson referred the cases to the Office of the Attorney General. Non-citizens must not be allowed to influence American elections, and I will use the full weight of my office to investigate all fraud, voter fraud, said Attorney General Paxton. In order to be able to trust the integrity of our elections, the results must be determined by our own citizens, not foreign nationals breaking the law to illegally vote. These potential instances are unlawful. Voting will be thoroughly investigated, and I will continue to stand with President Trump in fighting to ensure that our state's elections are safe and secure. The referral from the Secretary Nelson comes after Texas gained access to the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service, S-A-V-E, database. Texas was able to access the database following President Trump's signing of an executive order directing the Department of Homeland Security to offer the database at no cost to all states in order to preserve the integrity of our elections. Attorney General Paxton has long been a champion for election integrity. He recently announced the indictments and arrests of six people, including public officials, for election crimes related to a vote-harvesting scheme in Frio County. All California citizens should pay attention to this activity in this sanctuary state ran by an incompetent leader. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Shin.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the supervisors. God bless America. My name is Charles Shin. I am a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. I want to first start by thanking the supervisors for their attention and action, given not only to improve elections in Kern, but also their work and information garnered to assist our local economy. Thank you very much. The form before you titled Voting Systems Used by Counties, showing all 58 counties and the voting systems each use with the providers listed. Concerned citizens would like to encourage future research by looking into the other providers as a cost savings and time savings investment to Kern County elections. As a reminder, 2024 witnessed several system provider failures. March 5, we had five-and-a-half-hour poll book malfunctions for in-person voters by mixing up voters' precincts. We had mapping issues, which created a lawsuit and delayed a... election or a candidate from being sworn in for a school board. We had the five November Taft residents were mailed ballots that had to HCP precincts, which were 70-mile distant location. A quick synopsis of the other providers. We have Dominion here in Kern, which is a North American company. It is headquartered in Toronto, Ontario, Canada. It was founded in 2002 and now has offices in Denver, Colorado. We have ESNS, which stands for Election System Software, an American company based out of Omaha, Nebraska, started in 1979. And finally, we have Hart Intercivic, which is a private U.S.-held company based out of Austin, Texas. They started printing ballots in 1912, and their intercivic portion for elections equipment started in 2000. Thank you.
Thank you for this, Mr. Shin. Any other public comment this morning? Okay. Looks like we have come to the end of that, of our public presentations portion, and having already heard Board Member announcements... Actually, I didn't ask my colleagues if you had other Board Member announcements, and I'm really sorry about that. Gentlemen? Okay. I lucked out on that. Okay. Moving right along, our next agenda item is located on page... Actually... Kathy? I got... It's item number 23? Ah, there it is. Right at the bottom. Okay. Very good. Item on page four, again, we have agendas at the back of the room and the QR code for you to follow along. Item number 23, which is under the County Administrative Office this morning. Prepare yourself. This will be a rather lengthy and very important conversation about Kern County's fiscal status and what our plans are moving forward from our genius CAO team. So this is our proposed preliminary recommended budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and the CAO's office will make this presentation. The floor is yours. Thank you for all your hard work.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Let me start by thanking Mrs. Ray Sun. Unlike her, that she has a calm demeanor. I'm always a fire. So half of those extra hours is she's providing sound legal advice and therapy. So, you know, we're not working all the time. So today, we present the proposed preliminary budget for the upcoming fiscal year, a budget that reflects our commitment to fiscal responsibility and prudent stewardship of public resources. In light of ongoing fiscal uncertainties at both the state and federal levels, including potential funding fluctuations and economic challenges, this budget maintains the status quo and emphasizes disciplined management of limited resources. And I'm going to apologize in advance because unlike previous presentations of the preliminary budget, we anticipate a robust discussion on priorities, especially concerning homelessness and code compliance. These are critical to our community and will require careful attention as we navigate constrained resources. Luckily, I have a team that is going to help me with the presentation, so you will not have to hear a whole hour from me. During this session, we will provide your board with a brief overview of the preliminary budget, review the allocations of Measure K funding, and present the latest information regarding federal and state funding updates. Our goal remains to sustain essential services and maintain fiscal stability while preparing the county for future opportunities. We look forward to your insight and collaboration as we move forward together. During this presentation, we will try to address your questions. However, if the question requires additional research, we will return to your board with the additional information. So the preliminary budget document has been posted on the website, and it is available for review. We are committed to transparency and careful stewardship of public funds, ensuring resources are allocated responsibly. We would like to remind the board and the public that there are three upcoming opportunities to provide input on the budget. An evening meeting will be held July 28 for public comments, followed by a session to update revenue projections and year-end balances, and the process will conclude with the budget formal adoption in August. At any time, the board is welcome to provide guidance to our office. Now, I will turn the presentation to Budget Director Alex Alba to give you a budget overview.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are pleased to present you with the balanced preliminary recommended budget for fiscal year 25, 26, totaling $4.01 billion. This budget represents a 1.7% decrease, or approximately $70.7 million, less compared to the prior year. Today, as Ms. Martinez mentioned, is the first of four public meetings to discuss the fiscal year 25, 26 budget. It is important to note that this is a temporary budget and is not intended to be modified this morning. Our office will incorporate any board direction received today in the final recommended budget to be presented in August. The budget will also be revised before the budget hearing to account for final year-end fund balances and the assessor's final assessment role. Despite the persistent challenges of today's economic climate, departments have summarized budgets that emphasize core county functions and protect the quality of services delivered to the public. The proposed budget continues key priorities, including enhanced services to unincorporated area through Measure K, with additional details on Measure K to be provided later in the presentation by Joseph Ariola, who's sitting to my right. This budget also includes critical investments in public safety, code compliance, animal service, and other essential departments. Notably, the budget includes a net increase of $1.3 million in salaries and benefits to backfill key vacancies in the sheriff's office and restore funding by... for 19 previously unfunded positions, which include 17 positions added in February of 2025 by your board to establish a new medical and behavioral health section within the Detentions Bureau. To ensure a balanced budget, departments were directed to maintain status quo net general fund costs. They were also asked to absorb increased costs and address any reductions in revenue. This budget also includes the use of $9.4 million in carry-forward realignment and Prop 172 funds for safety departments. Additionally, the budget eliminates 114 vacant and unfunded positions, including 27 from public health, which Ms. Martinez will discuss later in the presentation. Also, this budget includes adjustments to departments' budgets that were unable to absorb the increase in general liability costs. Importantly, this budget proposal does not include the use of general fund reserves, and it does not provide for any additional cost-of-living adjustments usually granted in July. In sum, the fiscal year 25, 24, 26 preliminary recommended budget reflects a commitment to fiscal responsibility while preserving critical investments in community safety and essential services. We appreciate your board's leadership and look forward to continuously working with departments in the months ahead as we finalize the budget for adoption in August. Displayed on this slide in millions is the preliminary recommended budget for 25, 26, which totals, again, the $4.01 billion, which stated earlier is a reduction of $70.7 million compared to 24, 25 adopted budget. After adjusting for budget stabilization incentives, or BSI, capital projects, major maintenance, and reserves, the majority of this decrease is associated with the spend-down of American Rescue Plan Act allocations, also known as ARPA. Reductions in public safety realignment carry forward and declines in available Mental Health Services Act funding. At the top row, you can see the general fund, which displays appropriations are decreasing by approximately $37.8 million. This is primarily due to spending down of prior-year allocations of the Fentanyl Misuse and Overdose Task Force funding that was secured in 2023. It also includes reductions in one-time expenditures of public safety vehicle purchases and reductions in retirement costs. Also, it includes reductions in state and federal funding that was crucial for public health. However, these reductions are also partially offset by increases in general liability and workers' comp increases. On the second row is the operating special revenue funds, and they're expected to remain largely flat. However, there are some notable increases and decreases. The roads fund includes $32.2 million decrease, reflecting the natural variation in project scope and funding availability tied to their planning cycles. Behavioral Health and Recovery Service includes an increase of $20.8 million due to the implementation of Senate Bill 525, maintaining a higher minimum wage for healthcare workers, and residential provider expansion associated with Senate Bill 43 to meet unfunded mandatory requirements for substance abuse. Human Services Direct Financial Aid is also increasing by $12.1 million due to the California necessities increases and anticipated growth in service demand. The third row, other special revenue funds, which includes a decrease of $42.3 million, is associated with the spend-down of ARPA, reductions in available Mental Health Services Act funds, and reduction in one-time public safety realignment carry forward. Capital Projects Fund is associated with the decrease in necessary funding for the Regional Public Safety Communication Network project and related subscriber equipment. Finally, the increase in internal service funds is associated with an anticipated increase in group health self-insurance claim. As noted on the previous slides, the general fund totals $1.1 billion and supports a wide range of essential services, including general government, public safety, education, health, and sanitation. Within this allocation, the Sheriff's Coroner's Office accounts for roughly 30% of the total general fund. The probation department represents about 12%. And collectively, all of your offices represent less than 1% of the $1.1 billion general fund budget. This breakdown highlights the county's continued prioritization of public safety while also emphasizing the broad range of services supported by the general fund resources. the broad range of services supported by the general fund resources. This slide depicts two of the departments within the county's operating special revenue funds, which totals approximately $1.6 billion for fiscal year 25, 26. These funds support, again, a wide range of essential services, including general government, fire services, which account for 14% of the total, code enforcement, public ways and facilities, and public assistance. Among public assistance, the two departments represent the largest share, Behavioral Health and Recovery Service, which accounts for 28%, and Department of Human Services, which represents approximately 43%, covering both administration operations and direct financial As we develop the county's budget, revenue forecasting remains both essential and inherently challenging. While we strive for precision, our projections are based on the best available data at the time of development. For fiscal year 25, 26, the preliminary recommended budget includes $579.1 million in discretionary revenue, which includes minimal growth, with revenues expected to remain largely flat. This outlook reflects the broader economic climate, which continues to be shaped by uncertainty and volatility. According to UCLA Anderson forecast, the national and state economies are expected to experience slower growth and elevated inflation through '25 and '26. Key contributing factors include tariffs, inflation, federal spending reductions, and labor market disruption. These pressures are expected to raise operational costs and dampen economic activity in the near term. However, the forecast also points to a more optimistic outlook by 2027, driven by deregulation, tech investment, and targeted tax reductions. California's economic position remains strong but is not without challenges. While still the fifth-largest economy in the world, the state is grappling with rising unemployment, population outflows, and mounting fiscal pressures, as reflected in the state's projected deficit in the May revision. The Beacon Outlook Spring 2025 echoes this sentiment, noting that while California's economy is slowing modestly, it continues to perform well across indicators. The UCLA Anderson forecast projects that California's growth will align with the national trends in '25 and '26, with a slightly faster pace of expansion anticipated for 2027. The economic context underscores the importance of conservative revenue assumptions and fiscal discipline as we work to maintain service levels and long-term financial stability. For the preliminary recommended budget, an increase of 1.7% was used to provide preliminary projections for the fiscal year 25, 26 assessed valuation. The Assessor's Office and the County Administrative Office projected a 4% increase in assessed value for residential and commercial properties on the secure road. However, this growth is partially offset by a projected 15% decline in non-own gas property assessments, driven by ongoing regulatory measures and California's commitment to achieving carbon neutrality. The net impact to the general fund from these valuation changes is a projected increase of $7 million over the fiscal year '24, '25 adjusted budget. This includes $3.1 million in additional property tax revenue, $3.9 million in property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. And in addition, the fire fund is expected to collect $1.1 million more than originally budgeted in fiscal year '24, '25. The assessor will finalize the fiscal year 25, 26 assessment role on June 30, at which point revenue estimates will be updated and incorporated into the final recommended budget to be presented during the August budget hearings. Similar to property tax, sales and use tax is a significant source of discretionary revenue. As shown in the graph, the majority of our sales tax revenue is generated from business and industry, as well as fuel and service stations. Like property tax, sales and use tax experienced strong growth in recent years. However, that unprecedented rapid pace of growth is expected to slow in the coming fiscal year. For fiscal year 25, 26, county-wide sales tax collection, excluding Measure K, are projected to decrease by $22.9 million compared to '24, '25 adjusted budget. This anticipated decline reflects the impact of current economic conditions, including persistent inflation, high interest rates, elevated consumer debt, and shift in consumer spending behavior. It is also important to highlight that fiscal year '24, '25 collection included a one-time recovery of $20 million in sales and use tax revenues that had been misallocated to a jurisdiction in the prior years. As for Measure K, tax collections of the unincorporated area, revenue is expected to remain essentially flat, with a modest decrease of $212,000 projected for fiscal year '25, '26. This slide highlights the county's discretionary revenue for fiscal year 25, 26 preliminary recommended budget, which totals $579.1 million. Of that, $63.8 million is generated through Measure K sales tax. As illustrated in the graph, our major discretionary revenue sources have shown modest growth over time with a noticeable increase in '23, '24, following implementation of Measure K. However, outside of that increase, revenue growth has remained relatively flat year over year. For fiscal year 25, 26, we are projecting a modest increase of $15.3 in discretionary revenue. While this growth is welcome, it is not sufficient to keep pace with the rising operational costs, which continues to be driven by inflation, labor market mandates, and service demands. This slide illustrates how the discretionary revenue funds presented earlier are allocated across departments. As you can see, the sheriff coroner's office accounts for the largest share, which equals 33% of the total allocation, reflecting the county's continued commitment to public safety. That concludes my remarks at this time, and I'd like to turn it over to Joseph Ariola, who will provide further discussion on Measure K funding and related initiatives.
Thank you. That was excellent, thorough, succinct. I appreciate it very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Before getting into the recommended allocation for Measure K, I think it would be of value to revisit what Measure K is, what it's intended to accomplish, and what's been done up till It's important to recognize the context in which Measure K was passed. Leading up to the public referral, the county experienced a series of major revenue declines. In response to revenue losses following the Great Recession, the state realigned major public safety operations to counties, and while revenue was provided for their operation, it was not equal to the cost imposed upon counties. As the county began to adjust and compensate for this, an oil supply plummeted the value of local oil reserves. What was once over 30% of county property tax revenue was decreased to less than 15%. Additionally, local control of land use was eroded, slowing local revenue growth. This series of impacts means that, as county revenues climbed, they were subsequently knocked down a floor. This repeated itself, and further growth was limited. As we can see in the assessed value chart shown earlier in this presentation... My apologies. As we can see is shown earlier in the presentation. However, population needs and expenses continue to grow. Adjusted for growth, the county has less resources to tackle these problems than before. Meanwhile, the public made its request for expanded services clear. These local needs were best met by a local resource and implemented through local strategies. With your board's authorization, a ballot measure was approved for the consideration of voters. This measure to maintain local vital services such as law enforcement, fire, medical emergency 911 response, crime prevention, recruiting and retaining firefighters and sheriff deputies, attracting industries and jobs, addressing mental health and addiction challenges, and for general government use, was established through a one-cent sales tax in unincorporated Kern County and was estimated to provide approximately $54 million annually until ended by voters. This was a general tax, and its structure was based on public priorities. These priorities were determined through community surveys and over 20 community meetings hosted by county staff. The public provided specific priorities to be addressed in implementing Measure K, which included maintaining vital local services that we addressed earlier, maintaining medical emergency response, preventing thefts and property crimes, recruiting and retaining staff, improving sheriff-fire and 911 response, attracting new industries and jobs, helping address those mental health and addiction challenges, preserving library services, emergency road repairs, revitalizing rundown areas, and increasing animal spaying and neutering programs. There's 11 items listed here. 11 was landed on because those were the items that were ranked by the majority of those surveyed as critically important. With the work from county staff, the advice of the Oversight Committee, and the approval of your board, the public priorities were enacted through these programs. And I'll bring your attention to the initiative column on the far right. Detention Deputy Equity and Retention, Public Safety Recruitment and Retention, the Justice for Kern Initiative through our District Attorney's Office, Safety Squads and Medical Units through the Fire Department, Safety Recruitment through our Human Resources Department, Firefighter Workforce and Retention, Community Service Technicians at the Sheriff's Office, a Heart Flat Fire Station, Community Network Expansion, Economic Development, the East Kern Mobile Evaluation Team through Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, expanded library hours, and General Administration and Oversight. Since its implementation, the county has added the Sheriff's Activity League funding, Probations Mental Health Space and Security Enhancements, and a targeted spay and neuter program, which, in this last year alone, is estimated to provide up to 3,400 surgeries. And those 3,400 surgeries are estimated to successfully halt the growth in young and adolescent dogs received at the shelter. Other highlights through these last two years include the addition of 53 sheriff deputies through commander classification positions, 79 positions through the detentions deputy through lieutenant positions, over 15,000 applications for safety positions, and those were obtained by our Human Resources Division through that allocation given to them. ALS care through the Fire Department has been rendered to 8,500 patients and has saved 38 lives. Our crime lab has examined over 2,000 examinations. We have completed 72 economic development projects, and eight libraries are now open five days per week, and that's over 500,000 visits annually. I'd like to note that just one of those library branches was open five days a week before the passage of Measure K, and all of these programs listed here are either an expansion of county services or brand-new services that were not provided before Measure Shown here is the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 preliminary recommended budget for Measure K by priority. We have in the dark blue, Maintaining Vital Services such as Law Enforcement, Fire, 911 Response; in the county green, Maintaining Medical Emergency Response; in orange, Recruiting and Retaining Qualified Sheriff Deputies and Firefighters; in gold, Improving Sheriff, Fire, and 911 Response; in the dark red, Attracting New Industries and Jobs; teal, you can hardly see it up there, my apologies, but that is helping address mental health and addiction challenges; in the darker gold, Preserving Library Hours; and in dark green, Increasing Animal Spay and Neuter Programs. And I'd like to stress that the first four categories, as you can see, make up well over 75% of the allocations in this next year, all of which are addressing vital public safety Shown by program on this slide is the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 preliminary recommended budget. All of these allocations are included in each one of those departments, general fund allocation or special revenue fund allocation. For this year, we forecast $63.8 million of Measure K revenue. The remaining $2.3 million will be made up through savings from prior years. I prefer this graph for looking at the allocations, and I'll note that we have a few programs that have been fully allocated or completed and therefore are not shown. That includes the probation mental health space and security enhancements, CR Way Reconstruction, Ford City Park restroom improvements, Fuller Acres Park shade structures, Northwest Ball Field lights. This year also features the final allocation for the community network expansion, that's $5 million that may be available in future years. And this year includes one-time allocations, $500,000 for the targeted spay and neuter program, and $112,000 for the Sheriff's Activity League. All of these are expansions or additions to county programs that would not have been possible without Measure K. This is a local revenue for local priorities and implemented through our county strategies, which would not be the case through state or federal revenues, which Ms. Elsa Martinez will be giving more detail on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was...
Wow.
Wow. Wow, it's all right. It is a lot of information. I want to thank department heads and staff because they consolidate significant amount of work, six months goes into it, before presenting this preliminary budget for your board's consideration. But talking about the state and federal funding updates, so this month, the State Assembly announced legislative state budget agreement. The legislation version of this budget includes the same mix of budget solutions of those presented in the May revised, including reductions, revenue borrowing, and other accounting transactions to make a balance. While not significant direct impacts, next week, we will know if any of the trailer bills will have impacts that we'll need to incorporate in the recommended budget. At the federal level, last month, the US House of Representatives passed the one big, beautiful bill. The legislation moved to the Senate, where changes are anticipated, and then Supervisor Flores at the LPC meeting asked, "What are the impacts to counties?" And I think the National Association of Counties put a very good presentation online that includes some of the potential impacts. And while there are impacts, there are also some benefits in that bill. One of the benefits is that it preserves the municipal bond market. This will leave municipal bonds untouched, preserving tax exemption, and as we presented last board meeting, that is essential for counties to borrow at a lower rate. It also provides some changes to FEMA funding. FEMA funding is absolutely complicated, complex, and takes too long for counties to receive reimbursement. We're hopeful that there will be some changes that will be beneficial for counties. Of course, there are some concerns in this bill that talks about the FMAP. So this is regarding the federal participation on Medi-Cal. Right now, for the expanded population, they pay 90% of the cost. They're thinking about going to 80%, with the 20% being covered by the state. Depending on what the state does, that may impact the county. And of course, your board has heard about SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, that changes could, and the administration could shift from the sheriff cost of the administration to the state's and potentially the county. There are other provisions about Medicaid, known as Medi-Cal in California, that may impact the state, depending on how the state addresses those impacts. Those will come back to the county. We'll continue to monitor and work with the department to identify any local impacts, and if necessary, we will bring items to your board under a separate meeting. Excellent. One of the big direct impacts that we're seeing is public health. As you heard before, they receive unexpected reduction in funding. So the preliminary budget for public health reflects significant decline in funding allocations, contributing to the overall reduction of $12.5 million from the previous fiscal year. This funding was instrumental in funding essential services such as health education, clinic operations, vaccines, and other essential services that public health provides. So at the same time as they're getting these reductions in revenue, they're also implementing Senate Bill 525 with mandated minimum wage for healthcare workers. So in response to the reductions and the increased costs, the department has eliminated 27 vacant positions. Those are included in the preliminary budget. Appropriations for additional non-critical expenses have been reduced within the budget, such as, and they have also implemented a soft hiring freeze and reduction of nonessential travel. And despite the department's proactive approach to safeguarding core public health services and minimizing disruptions, further budgetary adjustments may be necessary, and those will be back to your board for consideration. Another topic that we want to address with your board is American Rescue Plan Act. As we indicated during the, when we set the guideline, there are some programs that are coming to an end that I think is important for your board to consider. So a key funding is for our budget is the American Rescue Act plan. As a reminder, the county received $174... As a reminder, the county received a hundred and seventy-four point eight million through this program. This one-time federal funding allocation was vital in financing county programs aimed at strengthening our community. The funds being used for infrastructure, parks, workforce support through premium pay, equipment purchases for Fire Department and Sheriff, assistance to our public hospital Kern Medical, and many other initiatives. A full list of these programs is available in our transparency website. And while most projects are approving the plan, our one-time investment, some of the programs that we established were for ongoing programs. Before I move to those ongoing programs, I want to highlight some of the projects that we actually completed using American Rescue Act Plan. Those pictures are actual pictures of projects. You'll see Casa Loma Restaurant Playground, Camp O'Heehee Portable Water Line. I think that is an amazing picture. Just see the scope of the work. Leroy Jackson New Playground, Supported Village. And then we have some projects not listed here but still in progress, and we plan to finalize those in the upcoming fiscal year. Some of them include Camp Conder Water System, Ford City Park Improvements, Belterra Park Improvements, Potomac, and a significant number of road improvements throughout unincorporated areas. So as I mentioned, some of the funding supports ongoing programs, including county-wide litter abatement and Metro Bakersfield graffiti abatement. The Rapid Response Team concentrates on outreach to homelessness individuals and also handles cleanups of encampments. Safe Camping and Hope on Heart provide important services to help address homelessness in our community. Additionally, by combining ARPA funds with Measure K and a contribution from the city of Bakersfield, we have been able to keep most, if not all, our libraries open five days a week, offering a wide range of programs. And while the deadline to use ARPA funds is December twenty-twenty-six, we expect that funding for some of the programs will only extend through the end of this fiscal year, and we have to begin planning for the future. Next slide. So what is the investment necessary to maintain the ongoing programs? It is nine point seven million annually. Next slide. So several of the ARPA-funded programs play a crucial role in improving the quality of life for our residents, particularly those addressing homelessness. While the county receives additional state funding, some of those funds are designated for other programs. Your board made a referral to the budget file for discussion on homelessness, and we'd like to take this opportunity to review the relevant programs and their funding sources. Stacy Kuhura, Assistant CAO, will lead this presentation.
Good morning, Stacy. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. One moment. So in the March eleventh board meeting, Madam Chair made a referral to the CAO to consider funding in fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six budget to look at a productivity audit and report back to the board audit outcomes for homeless services funded by the county. The referral was initiated following a financial and performance assessment of Los Angeles's city-funded homeless programs. The assessment concluded many concerns for LA's use of funds for homeless programming that included an inability to quantify funding, a lack of data, a fractured continuum of care system, limited financial oversight, limited performance monitoring, and a lack of reconciliation for funding spent. In response to the referral, I'd like to provide an overview to you of the programs operated or funded by the county or county departments and how we're managing these programs. The homeless point-in-time count serves as our high-level standard to measure the progression of homelessness throughout the county. The twenty-twenty-five PIT count numbers were released a few weeks ago, reporting two thousand six hundred and six homeless individuals, a two point three percent decrease from previous years. This is the first decrease in homelessness reported since twenty-twenty-two. I'm pleased to report to your board that Kern County benefits from a very strong network of homeless providers and partners collaborating to achieve our goals. The County of Kern, the City of Bakersfield partner together to support the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, the nonprofit organization serving as the continuum of care for our region. Unlike what was reported in Los Angeles, our partnerships with the city and BKRHC are strongly organized and collaborative. We work together to coordinate funding and expectations to ensure that we have a comprehensive system. We have a ten-year plan to end homelessness and published a strategic action plan last year that guides the continuum on our priorities and efforts. Kern County's responsibilities to address homelessness center on the county as a whole and the unincorporated areas of our jurisdiction. Our departments provide essential services that support homelessness throughout Kern. Animal Services provides services and support to the residents of M Street Navigation and their dogs, cats, and emotional support animals. Kern County Public Works Code and Rapid Response Team provides service in privately-owned properties and public right-of-ways. The department provides enforcement by routinely patrolling areas with chronic homelessness and response to complaints made by the public. The department conducts inspections with property owners, reporting parties, law enforcement. Property owners rarely abate their violations, forcing the county to hire contractors to clean properties and place abatement liens. The Code Homeless Encampment Team provides enforcement by continuously patrolling hotspots throughout Kern. The team responds to complaints made by the public and requests made by the Board of Supervisors. Code Teams regularly refer individuals they encounter to flood ministries to help them access shelter placements and other resources. When necessary, they connect to the Behavioral Health Met Team for people they believe cannot care for themselves. They pass information, they pass out information for community services such as food pantries, showers, meals. They've even started connecting people to Akito Street Medicine. The CalWorks Homeless Assistance Program and the Housing Support Program are operated by the Department of Human Services that helps families or victims of domestic violence who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness with payments for temporary shelter or payments to secure or maintain housing. The CalWorks Housing Support Program fosters housing stability through housing navigation, housing-related case management, rental or move-in assistance, payments to address arrears, security deposits, or repairs. The Housing Support Program has enrolled over five hundred and fifty families and helped over two hundred and fifty families find permanent housing. Bringing Families Home is a program aimed to improve housing security for families, reducing the need to place children into foster care, and increase reunification for children in out-of-home placements. The funding for this is currently expended and dependent on the state budget to continue the program. One of the more concerning demographics within our homeless population is the growing number of seniors facing homelessness. Aging and Adult Services operates HomeSafe program, which supports aging adults who are homeless or at risk of homelessness through diversion or response. This program is federally funded and may no longer be available after December of twenty-twenty-five. Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is a major provider and resource for homeless services throughout Kern County. They serve individuals, families, and youth facing homelessness in every single one of their programs and services. What you see listed on the slide are the programs that specifically serve homeless individuals and the annual cost of these programs. Kern BHRS has been a significant supporter of street outreach, funding flood ministries for outreach and prevention since two thousand and eighteen. Through ARPA funding, Kern BHRS has extended homeless outreach to serve Delano, Taft, Ridgecrest, Tehachapi, Mojave, Lake Isabella, and Lamont. In addition to these services, Behavioral Health has supported capital investments for transitional supportive housing, and they've funded transitional rent support through MHSA prevention dollars. As you can see, this list is extensive, as is the annual cost of this programming, roughly ten point five million dollars annually in program costs. Some of these programs are being transformed or ended in response to Proposition One. Proposition One, passed by voters in March of twenty-twenty-four, restructures the state's Mental Health Services Act and the funding received locally for behavioral health services. Behavior Health Services Act, as the funding is now named, requires a thirty percent of the overall allocation, or twenty-three point three million for fiscal year twenty-six-twenty-seven, to go into housing and rental subsidies for behavioral health clients. These impacts have resulted in service reorganization within BHRS, including the need to end the one point five million dollars in flood ministries services for street outreach. Where BHRS was previously supporting transitional rental support with MHSA, BHSA now requires long-term housing subsidies for rental assistance and housing support. Managed care plans will be providing short-term housing support for up to six months. BHRS will be required to use funds to provide long-term, ongoing housing subsidies for behavioral health clients from month seven onward. These subsidies will support adult residential placement and bridge housing services. The county supports three programs for emergency shelter in Bakersfield. M Street Navigation Center is a low-barrier emergency shelter offering a hundred and forty-seven beds in a congregate setting. M Street Navigation also offers ten safe parking spaces, allowing people to safely stay in their cars in the M Street parking lot. M Street Safe Camping offers fifty camping spaces in an area adjacent to M Street Navigation. And Hope on Heart, the first and only non-congregate, low-barrier, emergency navigation center for Kern County. Hope on Heart has fifty units that offers capacity for up to sixty people. The county works closely with our vendors operating these facilities, and we regularly monitor the specific performance outcomes for these programs, which focus on exiting clients into permanent housing. Since opening in May of twenty-twenty, M Street Navigation Center, operated by CAPK, has served four thousand six hundred and fifty-one unique clients. They've exited ten percent of the clients served into permanent housing. M Street staff have also been partnering with Project Tire Up to support connecting residents to a work-based program or help get them connected to employment. In the last year, they've seen success in getting a hundred and twenty-seven clients connected to employment. CAPK also operates Safe Camping, offering forty-two camping spaces. This program started in June twenty-twenty-two, has served six hundred and twenty-six unique individuals. Thirty-eight people have exited into permanent housing, and three clients have gained employment while residing in Safe Camping. Hope on Heart, operated by our partners, Hope the Mission, opened in March of twenty-twenty-four. The non-congregate, low-barrier shelter has served seven hundred and sixty individuals. They've exited twenty-three percent into permanent housing, and fourteen individuals have gained employment while at Hope on Heart.
Chair, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
I see that at the bottom, it says that's program data representing May twenty through twenty-five. So this is not an annual number. This is through, the data is from through that time period. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep, because they haven't, they've only just been open a full year, just over a year.
That's discouraging.
Pardon me?
It's discouraging in a way. I mean, to see that only ten percent of the clients-
You mean on, for M Street?
For example, yeah, for, I'm just, I'm picking that one out, but that roughly ten percent of the people that have gone into the M Street Navigation Center have gotten out to permanent housing over a four-year period.
Yeah, absolutely. Part of it is a lack of inventory in permanent supportive housing. Okay. Ongoing operations for these emergency shelter programs are funded with the American Rescue Plan Act or Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. ARPA funds must be fully spent by December twenty-twenty-six, and to date, fifteen point five million dollars has been allocated to M Street Safe Camping and Hope on Heart for construction and operations. Safe Camping is anticipated to have ARPA funding available through August of twenty-twenty-four. Hope on Heart is anticipated to have ARPA funding available through December of twenty-twenty-six. M Street Navigation Center has been funded through Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funds. This is a five-year grant funded through the state to local governments to support housing projects and programs. PLHA is administered through HCD and requires an approved housing element for jurisdictions to be awarded allocations. The county has received five point five million in the first two rounds and is expecting to receive another six point nine million for the remaining rounds to maintain the support and funding for M Street Navigation Center. PLHA is currently a five-year grant allocation. If not continued by the state, PLHA funding for M Street Navigation would be expended by December of twenty-twenty-six. The Homeless Housing Assistance Program, or HAP, is a state-funded initiative launched in twenty-nineteen that provides flexible grants to cities, counties, and continuums of care to prevent and end homelessness. These funds are not guaranteed. In fact, they're often not included in the governor's budget, but have been added following lobbying from cities and counties who recognize the value of these dollars and services. Locally, the County of Kern, the City of Bakersfield, and the Continuum of Care all receive funds through HAP. The county receives the smallest portion of the award, with the City of Bakersfield receiving fifty-one percent of the allocation, primarily due to the number of homeless individuals housed within city limits. Kern has received four point one million dollars in the first four rounds of HAP, and we anticipate receiving an additional seven point two million in upcoming rounds. Through HAP funding, the county offers services throughout Kern County. These services include a drop-in clinic serving East Kern and Mojave, a mobile shower program, youth homeless outreach services, rural case management, transportation for Delano Head Start, permanent supportive housing case management, staffing for the coordinated entry system, funding to support rapid rehousing for youth, move-in kits, support for the HMIS system, and capital investments for permanent supportive housing in Oildale. HAP dollars have also funded the Delano Navigation Center and Veterans Outreach Services programs that have ended or will be ending soon. The county's funding for homeless navigation and homeless services is fully supported by state investments, dispersed to counties to help meet goals to reduce homelessness throughout California. These funds are not ongoing or guaranteed, and very specific funding cliffs are on the horizon for programs funded by ARPA and HAP if not continued by the state. We are already seeing the impacts of federal and state cuts for department-run programs supporting homelessness. Given these funding vulnerabilities and the importance of these investments, we monitor our programs and funding closely to project for when other funding resources will be required to maintain services or to begin planning to end programs. So with this in mind, our priorities for the CAO's office as related to homelessness and housing in fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six focuses on four specific objectives. We want to refine the areas of focus with the current funding we have to allocate. We've heard specific feedback that services in areas outside of Bakersfield are needed, and we want to strategically enhance our efforts in smaller communities. We will be prioritizing the ongoing funding we have for this fiscal year to focus on ARPA-funded programs that are facing funding cliffs. We'll be standardizing and enhancing data currently tracked for all homeless resources operated by county departments and administered by the CAO's office. We plan to use this data to formalize an annual homeless report to bring back to the board for regular update on progress and outcomes. I'd like to conclude by stating that the issues identified in the audit of Los Angeles's homeless programming are not shared here for the county contracted programs. We are managing and monitoring our funds. We receive and review outcome measures on all programs funded through our office, and we are strategically considering where the greatest needs are and where our limited resources can make the biggest impact. It's our recommendation that in lieu of an external audit, we continue to move forward with our priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and present to your board an annual update to demonstrate the tracking, accountability, and outcomes. If we have funding to allocate, we ask you to prioritize maintaining M Street Safe Camping and Hope on Heart. Thank you. This concludes my presentation, and I'll- This concludes my presentation, and I'll be available for any questions.
Stacy?
Yes.
You are excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough and just excellent presentation. I really appreciate you.
I told you it was going to be a robust and long conversation, so we have another very important topic to go over. So similar to homelessness initiatives, ARPA also supports other important programs such as rapid response, litter abatement, and graffiti removal. While funding, while current funding is sufficient to support these programs through the end of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we must begin planning for the continuation beyond this point, if your board finds this program to be, this program to be a priority. Your board also referred the topic of code compliance to staff, which we will also like to address today. Notably, code enforcement is one of the few programs receiving additional funding in the preliminary budget, with one point six million allocated for abatement costs. Your department head, Josh Chaplin, will provide an update on code enforcement activities now.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as Elsa said, District Two, Chris Parlier, had asked for an update on the events of this past year in code, and I'm going to go a little deeper than that. I'm going to give a brief history, not going too far back on what code was, and...
Appreciate that. Please state your name for the record.
Joshua Chaplin, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Joshua.
Give a brief history, and just kind of show what we did versus what we're, service we're providing today. So I just thought I'd put this up on the screen. The code compliance mission is to work in partnership with the residents of Kern County to promote and maintain safe and healthy community standards. And over the years, I, it appears that code has changed a bit. Historically, we've been a private property abatement function of the county, and as we've moved to today, we're doing a lot of public property abatements in concert with litter abatement. And so I'll move on to a quick timeline here. So if we go back as far as two thousand and ten, this was before Public Works was one department, and so code compliance resided in what was Engineering and Survey Services. And back then, we had five code officers for the entirety of the unincorporated Kern County. That was one per supervisory district.
I remember that.
You can imagine, that's a lot of ground to cover for one code officer. As we move forward into two thousand and fifteen, that's when we formed as Public Works, and at that point, we added two extra code officers. These code officers were there to assist with the higher-profile cases, to also help us form what code compliance was going to be moving forward. In two thousand and eighteen, we saw a decrease in our people, and that was due to retention, hiring issues that we were going through. So we were, we had three total code officers, and we did implement one public property code officer at that time, and that was the very first time that we took a look at what kind of codes do we need to enforce on, on public property, and that, that's parks, that's county-owned property, and for the most part, that's our public roadways. And then in two thousand and twenty was the implementation of our rapid program, which is our litter abatement program, and that's where we're going out there, and we are actually clearing litter from the streets in an effort to, to assist with many things, the homeless crisis that we're going through. And in this year, we actually brought back up to six private code officers, and we were running two public property code officers who were directing this rapid crew. In two thousand and twenty-one, your board approved the implementation of a litter abatement portion of the land use fee, and with this, we were able to increase our staffing level significantly. So we were, we had seven private property code officers, two public property officers, and we had seven total Public Works maintenance personnel, who are now part of the official rapid crew. And at that point, we had one trailer, truck and trailer with a grapple on it, that we implemented to go around and respond to the public and to your board's requests for litter abatement. In two thousand and twenty-two, through the, the ARPA funding, we were able to staff an additional four code officers, so we were up to six for public property, and the private code officers and the maintenance workers remained steady. And as we move closer now, in two thousand and twenty-three, we increased our litter abatement rapid teams, and again in two thousand and twenty-four, we, we did the same. Now, moving from twenty-three to now, it's important to note that our general fund contribution has gone up. We're, we're receiving an additional one point five million that we weren't receiving prior to two thousand and twenty-three, so we are getting, we are receiving more money for litter abatement. And I'd just like to point out that in two thousand and twenty-four, I want to highlight the emphasis there on the employees who are either directly doing litter abatement, or, or the rapid crew are significantly assisting. In two thousand and ten, we had nine employees, that was our officers and our clerical, and today, we are staffed with thirty-seven employees who are seeking to assist. And like I said earlier, the, 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 the public side of things, and the, and especially the assistance with the homeless, that is something that has evolved since, you know, two thousand and eighteen essentially, and we, we've gotten significantly more robust in our, in our actions. And this is just a snapshot, and this is more to the, the referral, is what's happened in the last year. So we have two camps essentially, we have our private property and public property. On the private side, we're staffed with a program manager, a code supervisor, nine officers, and six clerical. Opened over twenty-seven hundred cases this year. We've spent one point seven five million dollars on abatements of violations, as Stacy said, and maybe it was Elsa, the majority of our property owners unfortunately don't choose to self-abate when there's a violation on their property. So we, as the county, have the obligation to still, the property owners surrounding them have a reasonable expectation that the properties are going to, around them are going to be maintained to the codes that this board imposes. And so we, as the county, have to go on there and abate these properties, and that's where a lot of the money is being spent. A hundred and eighty boarding clean projects, over two hundred encampments were abated, ninety-one illegal dumping cleanups, and thirty-three demolitions, and demolitions are expensive. I'll just put that out there, demolitions are very expensive. On the public side, we have one code supervisor, six officers, one Public Works Maintenance Supervisor, and twelve Public Works Maintenance Workers. Now that, those thirteen maintenance workers, we have four separate crews now that each have a grapple truck and a pickup, and they can go around and pick up large items from the street, and they're working everywhere in the county. So we've cleaned over seven hundred encampments, cleared over fourteen hundred individuals encountered, and this goes back to the homeless issue. We've encountered for over fourteen hundred, and our staff is equipped and trained to encounter these people in the field, and we know of these, these avenues to direct them for services, and of those three hundred and eighty-eight have accepted some form of help, as documented by our employees. We've cleared six, over sixty-three hundred sites, and we've, we've taken in almost fifteen hundred tons of garbage over that time period. So this was the response to the referral, and I hope this kind of gives the board a picture of where we are with code. Like I mentioned before, we've, we've continued to receive support from the general fund and CAO. If it is this board's desire to do more, I would ask for a measured approach, as we have ramped up over time. It's, it's difficult to make huge hiring improvements, come in and say, we want to double your program. It's difficult because we, there's a lot of training involved in these, in these officers, and so if it is your board's desire, I think a measured approach, as the CAO has, has gone through, is the appropriate response. But this concludes my prepared remarks, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that timeline. That is extremely helpful and very illuminating. I appreciate you very much, Josh.
CAO, thank you, Madam Chair. Two very important topics that we, we have in front of you for consideration. Some other future challenges that we have, that we are incorporating into the budget. You heard today about the economic slowdown. You also heard about the loss of key revenue in our public health department. Our general liability for our public safety continues to increase, and that's, you know, risk-based. The cost of insurance across the state of California is increasing, not just for individuals, but for public entities, so there's something that we're looking into. Of course, we just concluded our labor negotiations, and we're going to start again next spring. We, it's all over again, so those, those are coming. We did not include any major maintenance projects or capital projects in the preliminary budget, because we normally use a year-end balances, so we'll bring that to your board in July. And of course, you heard today about the phase out of the American Rescue Act plan. Those are the challenges that we'll be addressing and including in the budget, and, and also in the upcoming budget, as we already began preparation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven. Again, next steps, we'll have year-end balances, and we'll be back for a special meeting on the twenty-eighth to hear the public comments. The twenty-ninth, we'll give you, your board an update and final year-end balances, and budget adoption on the twenty, August twenty-six. Today's recommended action is for your board to discuss the budget and provide staff additional direction. We're asking that your board approve. As a reminder, this is a preliminary budget, so your board would approve. We are not adopting our budget yet. That happens in August. And then, we also have the deletion of the positions that are vacant and unfunded, so we ask that your board refer to human resources to amend the departmental positions and salary schedule. This concludes the budget presentation, and we will be happy to answer any questions your board may have.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, would it be appropriate to take public comment now? Okay, excellent. I, I find this presentation very, very helpful and illuminating. I want to draw the public's attention during the Measure K conversation to the public priorities. You see the top eleven listed? I want to highlight that the top five are public safety. Literally, one through five is public safety. And in my personal experience, this is now my twenty-fifth year talking to voters, walking door to door, I was in, during law school, I was in Toledo, Ohio, with election protection. I've been in congressional races in Arizona, literally all over the country. Public safety is the top priority for voters, I promise you. And those are the folks that are incredibly influential, and they put their leaders in, and they take them out. They are the public, they own this government, and, and they're very serious about public safety, and I mean, that is across the board, whether I've been in poor neighborhoods or moderate neighborhoods, white, black, brown, it is consistent. The, your property owners, the people who maintain your community, they want to see their public safety fully funded, they want more, they want more officers in their community, more presence, they of course want a respectful relationship with law enforcement, that is a strong desire, and I, I think we're improving on that all the time, truth be told. But, but the public expects and demands public safety to be funded extraordinarily so. You saw Measure K go through, we had extraordinary partnerships, our sheriff, our district attorney, you know, Christian Romo, my own staffer, who is profoundly influential within the Democratic Party, all came together in recognition that this is, this is a public priority. So I just want to put that out there as a reminder, this is always a good reminder for me as well, because we can, we have so many problems to manage, so many, and we always will. But here, the public has let us know where, where their heart is, and I'm so grateful for Measure K. My goodness, we, we have, we really, we dodged a bullet by passing that one, Kathy, as you know, my goodness, so hats off to my sheriff. But I would like to open the public presentation portion, or the public hearing portion of this matter, and hear from you, your thoughts on what you've heard today, if there are members of our department head or department head family who want to weigh in, this would be the time to do so, but we, we'd love to hear from you. I see Mr. Turnipseed in the back, I know he has very strong opinions, and I look forward to hearing from him as well, so the floor is yours, public. Please let us know how you feel. Here comes Mike, very good. Any other members of the public who would like to weigh in? Okay. And of course, this is the first of several steps before we make final decisions, but when we close this public hearing, we're going to come back to the board, and the board is going to actually provide direction to the CAO, because we have to have priorities, we have to prioritize what we do and how we spend our money, just like each of you do within your own home, out of necessity. We have to do that with Kern's fiscal home as well. Mike Turnipseed, it's good to see you, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Michael Turnipseed, I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I had to move up to the front so I could read the small print on your presentations, and please, make the print bigger for us old blind people who can't read from the back row.
Got it.
Some things that caught my attention, we had a conversation yesterday at your committee meeting, but, and you're talking about all the projects and how they're intermined. You have a lot of projects and a lot of programs that are on one-time funding, this is going to expire in twenty-six, this is going to expire in thirty. We have people employed, we just heard about trash cleaning pickups with ARPA money, ARPA money's going to be gone in eighteen months. Has anybody taken the time to make a list of every, all these ongoing things we get that aren't ongoing, they're going to end in the next three years, five years, whatever the number is? How many people are employed in those jobs? And what's going to be the plan in the next two months? This is just rocket science, but I know Elsa and her team can do this, as what's going to happen when all those plans get done? Who's going to clean up the garbage? Who's going to do this while maintaining the county's priority to public safety? What's going to happen to everything else? And there are several other comments here, but that caught my attention the most, and overriding theme, is we depend so much in other people's money, and that's going away. The BBB, when we finally monetize it, it's going to be very, very significant, I think much worse than we ever thought. The state's in no position, so this is really, and I mentioned yesterday, the fact of zero-based budgeting, or more importantly, outcome-based budgeting. Of all the homeless programs we have up there, which ones are really working? Which one are we getting positive outcomes and a dollar return for a dollar spent? That's the hard work of this budgeting that we're going to have to look for. And it's easy to sit in the back cheap seats and, and comment, but I think these next three, it's not this year, it's next year, it's going to be for a while, and it's going to be really significant changes that, we saw numbers today of programs, and what's this? But most of them have a time period where they're going to end, and how are we going to address the services we need? Thank you for your time.
Mike, thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, we're going to close, close the public hearing and return to my colleagues for very difficult conversations about the limited money that any entity or institution has. There's always limited money. I did find it stark, the comparison between the project and Jeff Flores's district, and he'll talk about that, I'm sure, when he's, when, when he speaks, but that is, that is remarkable return on investment, much higher than we've seen across the board. We have to have those conversations, to Mike's point, because frankly, we need to also know what we're doing that's working and what doesn't work. Sometimes we can have blind spots about our great ideas when they don't actually work, and that's just human, and we need to be straight about that. And this is a golden opportunity to do it, because we have no choice. So I see that several of my colleagues have plugged in, or punched in, rather, Supervisor Parlier, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when I'm in the unincorporated areas of my district, I hear we need more deputies on the street. When I'm in municipalities or cities within my district, and I believe I have six of them, I hear we need more jail, not jail space, but the jails open to be able to take our arrestees and have some sort of punishment for them. Now, when it comes to Josh's presentation and code enforcement, rapid response units, you know, it's not considered public safety, but what it really does is add to the benefit of public safety, where if they weren't out doing those sort of things, it would splash over to our law enforcement or fire department responsibilities. Josh, I have a quick question for you, if you want to come up, please. So on to one point seven million spent to abate violations, how fast do you burn through that money in a year? Is it, does it make it through a year, or is that gone in six, eight months?
So, the, the...
And that covers your board ups and other stuff, too.
The short answer is it gets us through the year, that number has, and it's, it's been done different ways in the past, and Ms. Martinez can... And it's been done different ways in the past, and Ms. Martinez can comment on that. But there is a, typically in the past, we've been allocated a certain amount of money for our abatements, and then the general fund, there's an extra, I believe a half a million that resides in the general fund, and when we come up, when we're starting to come up against our limits, we ask for that to be released to us. I think that may be done differently this year, but that's how it's been done. But the 1.75, with the officer numbers we have, and there's a heavy reliance on private contractors to go in and do the work, and that, that's starting to become an issue because there's only so many that want to bid these jobs and come on. And then when they get a lot of jobs, it starts to back up. So if we're to do more abatements, then we're going to have to do more work to attract business owners to come in and do the work. So that's kind of, that's been an issue lately, but 1.75 million with the current officers we have is sufficient at the moment.
In a perfect world, what would that number be? Would it be over 2 million?
As far as, explain the perfect world.
Well, as far as the needs, when I've talked to various people within code enforcement, officers in the field, the feedback that I got that there may be a hindrance with that money, that meaning there would be more availability to go after, you know, burned-out structures, abating properties, if that fund was, had more allocation.
This is partly true because of the, like I mentioned, the high dollar in abating burned-out structures. There's a process in place, when we, when we're doing something over $50,000, that's something that needs specific board approval. We can't do, just go do abatements on things over 50,000. So when an item comes up to my desk and it's over 50,000 or even close, it makes me hesitate because I know that that funding is tight. And so, yeah, in a perfect world, more funding would allow me to easily make those decisions, especially early in the fiscal year. When we're early in a fiscal year and we see a $90,000 demolition come across the desk, then we have to balance, okay, how is this going to affect us at the end of the fiscal year? Because that's a huge, those are huge expenses that come up. And so I couldn't tell you in a perfect world, but obviously more money on, for abatements would allow the, would allow them to move along faster.
Well, with the hit we're going to take, it's about triaging services, and I know that I have a certain number of, you know, abandoned or burnt-out structures. Letitia and Jeff probably have more than I have within the.
What's that supposed to mean, Chris?
I'm here to help you. So I just want to make sure that you're funded properly, too, even though we are in, you know, difficult budget times. I think the rapid teams, the added code enforcement officers are again a benefit, not only to the districts throughout the county, but also again with ancillary benefits to our law enforcement personnel where they hopefully don't have to deal with certain stuff because we started, or stopped at the beginning instead of, you know, letting it fester to a larger problem. Thanks, Josh. I have another question for C A O, and that's probably about it. Elsa, it was mentioned, or Alex, maybe you can help me out, the assessors office, C A O, their moderate increase of 4% in assessed property value, can you put that in dollars,
If I may, Supervisor Parlier, 4%, the increase is related to our secure role. We also have a decline in oil and gas. In real dollar values, if you look at the presentation, it's a total of 7 million total in discretionary revenue and 1.1 to the fire department.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Parlier. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you.
Mike. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Elsa, C E O, Joe, Alex, for that great presentation, presenting us a fiscally sound budget with also protecting vital services and public safety. I think that that's very important. And thank you, Supervisor Parlier, for your questions for code enforcement and for abatements. I'm willing to support whatever is necessary to ensure that we can do those abatements in the future because I know I have some burnt structures in my district, and one alone came in at 48,000. I was anticipating double the price, but we got a good price. That's just one structure. So Josh, whatever you need for abatements, please let us know because I'm willing to support whatever that takes. With respect to ARPA, I'm very thankful for the one-time projects that have come, the big capital projects that proved very beneficial to all our districts. But with respect to the programs, I also welcome that infusion of dollars, but those should be tied to, those ongoing programs are more than one-time programs. Basic things like code enforcement, particularly graffiti abatement, those should be ongoing, not tied to one source money. So whatever we can do to ensure that moving forward, we adequately fund them at the necessary levels from the general fund, irrespective of one-time ARPA dollars, I support that as well. Because I don't know, I know we've had a partnership with the city of Bakersfield, I think that's coming to an end, so I don't know what the future of in-house graffiti abatement looks like or the cost, but whatever that is, whatever that number is, I thought it was 600,000, I support bringing it in-house or continuing a partnership with the city or going out to private vendors. Because in reading the documents from Public Works, it talked about having one officer a couple of years ago for the entire county, and we need to do much better than that. We have done better than that with our city contracts, but I want to make sure that wherever we're at in the area with graffiti abatement, that should be sustained in the budget. So just wanted to make that notation. Also, the work on tiny homes is very encouraging, the numbers, thank you, staff, for investing those dollars there. Whatever we can do to sustain that for the county, I would welcome that as well. So thank you, look forward to moving to the next couple of dates and providing the best budget we can for the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Couch.
So I want to ask a quick question about, way back in the presentation, you talked about 20 million dollars that was misallocated. Do you recall that, it was sales tax?
Supervisor Couch to the chair, I do.
I wanted to make sure people understood, people tuned in and heard that. Was it misallocated by you?
It was not.
Okay, it was misallocated by someone at the state level that sent it to.
That is correct.
One or more jurisdictions that shouldn't have gone there, it should have come to Kern County.
That is correct. And working with our consultant, we got those funds reallocated back to our share section to the county.
Okay. Where's Josh? See, there he is. I got a couple of questions, or one. Remind me how you prioritize, specifically to abatements, how do you prioritize those? Is it just as they come in?
Well, yeah, it is, I mean, it is as they come in.
Okay.
You know, they get assigned to the officers that are, we have regional officers and they're assigned to them, and then, I mean, there's, that's the priority, is how they start. And then, you know, depending on the attitude of the property owner, that's kind of how quickly we can move through the process.
Do we ever, and I don't even know if this would result in a better price for the county or not, do we ever group them? Like, if you estimate that you have some that are of a similar cost, similar size, similar amount of work, maybe you group them and you get three done for 25,000 instead of three done for 10,000 each or something? Or have you ever thought of just doing, what I'm looking for is to make the biggest impact? Do all the small ones first, since the money's tight? Or do all the big ones first? I don't know which makes, which makes more sense for you. How are we prioritizing?
I think those are things we can look at. I think our goal usually is to process them as quickly as possible for the, for the reporting party to be satisfied with the work we're providing. So, you know, we have a list of contractors and contract, any of, any one of our contractors will have five to six on the books at any given time. So it's back to my point of getting the work done right now is difficult because we have so many abatements and we have few contractors who have signed up to do this work for us. And we've gone through the process of looking into, you know, the contractors, list of contractors in the state and actually calling them and saying, hey, is this some work you want to do for us? And so we have, we've honestly been having limited, limited interest in the work. There is a, there tends to be contractors who will do the work for substantially cheaper for whatever reasons, that's their business model. And so we tend to use them heavily to try to get the most impact we can of our funding. Certainly grouping projects is a strategy I would look at and see if that's something that would help the bottom line.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. I'm, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Couch to the chair, one of the things we talk about is looking at abatements. If you heard from the presentation, property owners don't do it, then Public Works has to do it, and then that goes into their property tax bill. Looking at this from a more holistic way, we started exploring, is there a possibility? Because those properties then have that tax bill, and if property owners didn't want to pay to fix it, of course, they're not, sometimes they lay on their property taxes and then those go to default. So the concept is we're going to look at it more holistically. Is there something we can do so if those, if we do abatements, can we do something so those properties turn over? Because we don't want empty lots, even if they're clean, because that attracts more life. So we're looking at different options, and I think we just had a very high-level discussion with, with what it ties to homelessness and code, because they go hand in hand. And so what can we do as a county with those properties that have those high-dollar liens that are not, you know, they're not paying their property taxes, nobody wants to buy them to build? We have a need for affordable houses. We have land, we just need to make sure that we make it attractive for people to buy those properties. So just more to come.
I'd be interested in that because I've thought about that, whether it would be advantageous, smart, whatever, for the county to make an offer on a property like that, which you're right, is probably going to sit there because the lien may be larger than the property value itself. Okay, but that's a, that's a little bit of a slippery slope when we put a lien on the property and then we're right there to take the property off your hands. I'd like, and I don't know where this would fit in the budget, but we have some parks, at least in the fourth district, and we have what, some parks that are under construction in the fourth district that are brand new, will be brand new. They're going to take maintenance, and I'd really like us to be careful and try to find somebody who can maintain, because these are all, I think, what would be considered remote. I know that's a specific term when it comes to park maintenance. I'd like us to take a look at that and be careful of how we, how we choose a maintenance contractor or who it is, because I know it's difficult for our staff to get everywhere in the 8,000, 8,100-plus square miles. Or I want us to also take a look at if they're in a city or if they're in a district, or even if they're not in a district, but there's a district that may be very adjacent, that's in one case, of that district taking over that particular asset. It's probably got to come along with some cash because nobody wants to take over just the liability of maintaining something, but that's what these, these districts do, and that's all they do. And I'd just like us to think about that as, as we go forward. I'll make a motion on your recommendation, which is the A, B, and C, which includes to refer to the Human Resources Division to amend the departmental positions and salary schedule. And with the, with the last comment is, I'm under the assumption that with, give you two extra comments, I'm under the assumption that if the money stops from the state or the federal government for a particular program, that the service probably ends. I know you're asking us, do we want to continue any? I don't know that we're in a position to say we do today because I don't know that we have the money. I understand, I think it was Stacy asked us for too specific, and I'd be good with that for the next year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a handful of different thoughts, kind of going a few different directions, so just bear with me. Bouncing off of one of the things Supervisor Couch mentioned, I actually brought this up with Director of BHRS at Allison Burrows recently, but I don't know whether it's a good idea or not for sure, but I would, would be interested in exploring using properties that are defaulted or that would eventually be going to a property sale anyway, to utilize those for some type of transitional housing if they're appropriate. I think that would be a common sense way to go about it. And again, there may be some issues with that that I'm not thinking about right now, but I think it's worth looking into. Another thing, I just, I don't have a specific referral on this, but something that I've noticed is a fair amount of change orders on some projects, and I would just like to put it out there that I would like to see us really be cognizant of those. When I was on the Kern High School District Board, we actually implemented a policy where if change orders exceeded, I think it was 10%, the contractor had to come back and get that approved before the board and explain why there were those cost overruns. And I get that's, you know, very general and it's not going to be applicable for every project, but I think that's something that we should really be mindful of. And then as far as what we're speaking about with ARPA, those one-time funds, you know, we knew those were going away, they're, they were something that we could use for these projects. And I think to Director Champlin's credit and Public Works, they've done a really good job as far as, you know, going out and doing these emergency road repairs like we saw with Sierra Way. That was a huge undertaking, and I was really glad they were able to get that done. That was a big help for the community. The code compliance, illegal dumping prevention, I think they've done a great job, and I really appreciate the communication that we see on that. But I also think, though, that more than just one-time projects, that we look at things like Measure K and the need for increased public safety, but removing those illegal encampments, keeping our streets cleaned up, picking up illegal dumping, and enforcing those laws against it, I think are public safety issues and are quality of life issues for residents. So I would really like to look at ways that we can keep funding those, those programs. And, and like I said, Public Works has done a good job of reporting to the, to the board about, you know, this is how many encampments they've cleaned up, there's so many individuals they've encountered, and I really appreciate that. Going back to the homelessness issue, I, I get that there's not quite the same, you know, just very definite metrics that they can report on as far as their successes, but I think we are investing a lot of money in homelessness, and I would like to see some, some more reporting, some more information coming out about what those goals that we're hitting and what our benchmarks are for success because that, I mean, we see how big homelessness has, has impacted our county every day, and there are other counties around the state. I think Riverside County's seen a 15% drop in homelessness. I think San Bernardino County's seen close to a 20%. There are counties out there that for whatever reason homelessness is decreasing, and I don't know if that's because their, their policies are having an impact, I don't know if that's just because of a natural shift in the, in the homelessness population, but whatever strategies we can be looking at to, to help curb that, I think is something that would really be worth prioritizing. So I think that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters, thank you. Excellent remarks. Supervisor Couch, you're up again.
Yeah, I remembered, I had one other thing. It was kind of along with what Supervisor Peters was saying here is the 10%, this wasn't even 10% of the clients that exited to permanent housing is a really low number, but I just think it's a low number. Maybe the national average is 8%. Maybe we're, maybe we're 25% ahead, or I just don't know. And also, Mr. Turnipseed said, well, is it working? Well, if just getting 4,600 people off the street is working, then yes, it is working. So I, we have to define what working is.
Okay.
I was under the impression, and I don't know what the percentage was going to be, that our real goal is to get people off the street, get them the help they need, and get them into a job in some permanent housing. That's the ultimate goal. That's the ultimate goal, I think, for every one of them. But I don't know what a realistic percentage is to meet. Do we have any, I, I don't remember if that even being discussed because maybe we didn't have that kind of data.
We have not had those conversations. I'm sure we can come back to your board with those numbers. But you're absolutely right. Those people will be on the streets, you know, in encampments, creating litter, litter in the community. So now they are in a safe place that hopefully, you know, they can get some help. With Prop 1, Stacy mentioned it. Prop 1, I think it's going to change a little bit the dynamic because $23 million of behavioral health funding is being now deferred to supportive housing. Our Kern Health Systems friends are now responsible for transitional housing, which they were not before. That used to be on behavioral health. So now they have to address that. So hopefully there'll be some inventory for those people to move up. They come to the, they come to safe camping with a lot of challenges. Substance abuse, mental health. You heard that we actually invest in money on the jail, on the behavioral health side. And so hopefully if they happen to, you know, commit a crime and they go into the jail, they'll get some help. And once they come out, let's hope that they're more productive citizens and they don't end up with that same cycle. But you're correct, we're investing a lot of money and we need to define what the goals are of investing that money. So as Stacy mentioned, we want to come back to your board with a more robust reporting and we'll work on those details to make sure like if 10% is success or we're really failing and we need to look at how we're investing the dollars. One thing I want to address with Mr. Turnipseed comment was, are we accounting for one time? Yes, that's why we're having this discussion. And we're having it a year ahead of when the funding is ending. One of the things we did last fiscal year, and we knew they were ending, we knew there was a cliff, so we put $9 million on a designation called Budget Stabilization because we know that some of the programs are going to end. We knew there were going to be impacts from the state. We didn't anticipate as many impacts from the federal government, but they're not certain yet, so we're, we're cautiously monitoring those. A lot of the impacts from the federal government are going to impact our community. And, and although it may not be direct to county programs, it might impact county programs. For example, if people lose their healthcare, the first thing they're going to do is call 911 and our fire department is going to be responding, as Supervisor Peters mentioned. We're going to have our Kern Medical Center have been impacted if they ended up in the emergency room. And as a reminder, the county is responsible for indigent medical care. So there's a lot of conversations we're going to have around budget coming up and we'll include more detail some homelessness to make sure that we're using our dollars wisely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters, did you punch it again?
I did. I just wanted to make one quick comment about bouncing off what Elsa said about the, the state's budget shortfalls. I don't know if any, anyone from the state's paying attention to our meetings, but I do understand that they're having a budget shortfall and it's impacting us, but we'd be more than happy to help. All they have to do is start letting us go.
Here, here, Peters. Are you done Peters or are you just getting started? Ah, I like it. I like it. Okay, you done with that? Okay, very good. You know, we cannot manage what we don't measure. It's an impossibility. And as, thank you, Mike Turnipseed, for sharing with the thought leaders of this community information and best practices that are occurring around the state, including right next to us in Fresno, of looking at the ways in which government dollars are spent and how, who are they benefiting? And, and what is the, what is the benefit to the taxpayer by the money that is being spent? I think what we have seen by the information Turnipseed has provided, not just here but at the city, to, to leaders here and at the city and what's happening around the state is what, you know, we call in the philosophical world, the tragedy of the commons, which is without measurement and without accountability, the vast majority of human beings are going to take advantage of that reality and not be accountable for what they're responsible to. That's just a reality. And that ultimately comes back to us. The buck stops here with these five members of the Board of Supervisors. We get profoundly excellent wisdom and information from our staff, which I am so grateful for. But, you know, this business of getting a bunch of money from the government and then not accounting for it is atrocious, it's problematic, it's immoral and unethical. And we have to look at it seriously. Whether it's pure neglect or whether it's intentional, we have to look at it seriously. When I look at the, Jeff Flores' project, the tiny home project, that is a return on investment that is double literally what we see elsewhere. It really behooves us to look at that and say, what is working here and what's not working in other places? Not, not necessarily to hurt people or to slander them, but to be serious about the coffers that belong to the people, how they're being spent, how they're being managed and measured. Otherwise, we shouldn't be doing it. And we give people the impression that they can just continue business as usual with, with their outreach efforts or whatever is happening, they claim to be happening with no real measurable results. I had somebody joke with me, the other very respected member of this community who I admire, joking with me about the city, said, oh, well, you know, they've spent X amount of ten, tens of millions of dollars on obsolescence. I think they've housed six people, is what this person said to me. That, I'm sure that was an exaggeration. I don't mean to drag the city into this. But these conversations are happening around the county with people who are looking very closely at the way we do business. And they have real questions about how we're managing the taxpayers' dollars. And, and I would really encourage the staff to just, just be bold about what is working and what's not working. We see the difference between the two homeless strategies. I believe very strongly the tiny house, tiny home project is our most successful route as it relates to people that are stunningly broken by life. And we see this when we see them. We know the encampments and the kind of, the, the folks, the, our neighbors, some of them are relatives, literally, that are in these homeless encampments because they have been broken by life or they have substance abuse issues, they have PTSD. We have veterans in these homeless encampments. It is stunning to think about the, what, what is, you know, members of our community, our neighbors, the pain and suffering that we see happening. But we know that in a collective group that many times, and we've seen it over and over again, the peer, the peer review nature, the, the access to some privacy, even be it a small space of privacy, has a big impact on the willingness of people to modify their behavior, to behave, to stay out of trouble, to stay out of the emergency room, especially we can, you know, look at that organism, if you will, and is a health home, and just be, be wiser about how we spend money and actually care about the outcomes, not just hand money out to people that, you know, have a, have a nice presentation but are not managing and measuring for the taxpayer in the way that is righteous and a way that we should be holding them to. So I want to say to my colleagues, thank you very much for your comments. They're brilliant as usual. To the staff, thank you so very much for what you're doing and how you do it. Thank you to our sheriff, our, you know, frontline public safety responders who, who've been through profound challenges at recruitment and retention. I think this board has been very responsive to those needs. And that's wise because we know that our voters and our bosses need us and demand that we prioritize that and that we be clever and judicious in the process. So thank you very much. I'll get off my soapbox now and say I appreciate you all so much. This, it brings us to the end of our public presentation. I believe we have a motion by Supervisor Couch. Thank you for that. Do we have a second? This is a receive and file, correct? Thank you Supervisor Parlier.
No, there were three different pieces to their recommended action.
Okay, so what's your motion?
It was just the, on the staff's recommendation.
Okay. Motion on staff's recommendation. As to the budget, David?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
We are going to do one more roll call.
Oh, that's right.
Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Parlier?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Here, yes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
And I get so many things right. Okay. All right, here we go. That's done. Do we have another vote to take? Nope, that's it? Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our morning agenda. We'll be back at 2:00 PM. I look forward to seeing you. Hope you're here. And thank you for your patience this morning. We adjourned.
Oops. Motion, Jeff?
Yep, motion.
Motion by Jeff Flores to adjourn.